Good evening, welcome to the Winthrop School Committee meeting Monday, October 16th at 6:00 PM in the Harvey Hearing Room. Ms. Ham, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vecchia?
Present.
Mr. Capabianco, Dr. Callis, Mr. Holden, Mr. Sanford?
Yeah.
Mr. Perrin?
Yeah.
Ms. Solomon?
Here. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda, we had delegates and visitors. We did have the Miller Field Committee coming back and we have rescheduled that to a meeting either in late October or early November when we will have more information from that committee. Next, under correspondence, we did have some emails. We had three emails from Gus Martucci about two different issues. One was attendance of committee members and I have reviewed the policy and there is a policy that if committee members miss 50% of the meetings within a 12-month period, they're considered to have abandoned their position. No one on this committee meets that, this criteria at this point. Ms. Hames was helpful in getting me all of the attendance over the past more than one year. So, thank you for that. Mr. Martucci also brought up that he would like to have clarified, Mr. Lutere's sitting at our table at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago and I did clarify that at the beginning of that meeting, but I'll take a moment to clarify that again. Mr., President Sanford had asked Mr. Lutere to come and sit at the table as a liaison to the town council. Mr. Lutere and I were very clear before the meeting started that he was not to participate in discussion or to participate in voting. If he wanted to contribute to the meeting, he would need to do it in public comment from the audience. Mr. Lutere agreed to that. Mr. Lutere then went to the town council meeting at the next one and reported what the happenings of the school committee. So, I wanted that to be clarified. I know that might have been confusing to the public had they not seen the first few minutes of the meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from September 25th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Vecchia, second by Vice Chair Perrin. Any discussion on the minutes? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the warrants. We have warrant SPW 18-6 in the amount of $199,718.98. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion on the warrant? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. We have two payroll warrants. SPW 18-3 in the amount of $175,029.32. Warrant SPW 18-4 in the amount of $173,689.29. I'll make a motion to take both together. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion on the payroll warrants? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. And I don't see any budget transfers tonight. Is that accurate?
No, there is.
There is, sorry.
Yep.
Warrants, payroll warrants, expenditure reports. Is it right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything outstanding or, not outstanding, but is there anything Superintendent Howard, like notable in these budget transfers that you'd like to discuss?
There is not. This is just a continuation of looking at those lines week to week and making sure we're having lots of discussions around where we are seeing shortfalls and really doing that sort of forensic look at the budget as we move forward in the budget planning for the next school year, aligning things so that when we take a peek at that budget, we see where the actual expenditures are. And that each one is explained in its fullest to me in terms of why we were expending that money, why we didn't plan for it. A lot of it, I'm finding, is just cleaning up of those lines to make them accurate. And some of it has to do with different expenses that you may have not had last year because we had supplies left over, but this year we're finding ourselves short of certain things. So, really getting the explanation in details of each one of those transfers is helpful to me in the coming for next four years. So, nothing extraordinary, more so just cleaning up.
Motion to approve the budget transfer?
Second.
Second by President Sanford. Just in terms of discussion, I'd just like to say that this is, this is a budget that you didn't create that was sort of handed to you, so I commend you for taking a close look at it each, each week and then keeping us updated each meeting. We're not used to budget transfers so frequently, but I think it is good practice, so thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. I'm going to pass this for signature. What do I do with my agenda? All right. Buildings and grounds requests. We do have the Winthrop Lodge of Elks for an annual shoot and that would be, actually we have two requests. I'm going to take them separately, please. The Winthrop Lodge of Elks is looking for Saturday, November 4th from 9 to 1, the ATC Gymnasium. They have submitted paperwork and a custodial fees check. In the past, they have, we have waived the rental fee. I did ask that they also attach an email, which they did send to us requesting that formally. I think that we do have a subsidized rate for nonprofits of $25 per hour versus the regular rental rate. In the past, we have waived even the subsidized rate for the Elks. I think that that's just something that we need to look at each time where we're waiving fees, especially with the situation that the school district is in at this time and, you know, make sure that we're doing that prudently. So, anyone like to make a motion for the Elks?
I'd like to make a motion that we waived the fee.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we have a vote that will waive their fee, but I think we still need to vote to allow use of the grounds, but we can take that together. The Winthrop Elks and the Beverly Richards Dance Center is looking for Thursday and Friday in June. Wow, they're planning ahead, I guess it must be their dance recital. 4:00 to 9:00 PM, the Neil Shapiro Center for Performing Arts and that has come with custodial fees and rental.
All the necessary covers.
All the necessary, correct. And so, I'll make a motion to approve the buildings and grounds usage for both of these organizations.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Vecchia. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we have curriculum. There's nothing under curriculum on our agenda tonight. If there's anything, Superintendent Howard can include that in our superintendent's report. Under general function, subcommittee reports, we actually did not have a curriculum subcommittee, but we did have a buildings and grounds subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Vecchia, are you prepared to report on that tonight?
Yes. On September 27th, 2017, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met in the principal's conference room at the Winter High School meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. In attendance, Don Sullivan, Brian Perrin, Superintendent Lisa Howard and myself. Agenda items included the transportation RFP. The committee reviewed the only proposal submitted under the RFP which was received by Healy Bus Incorporated of Swansburg. The superintendent presented an extensive analysis using Healy's proposal versus the current in-house service operated under the Winthrop School District. The committee voted not to pursue the RFP at this time and to hold further discussions to review the in-house options to improve transportation for the district. The superintendent, I believe, is going to report on more extensively on her report. The meeting adjourned at 6:10.
Right. And there was a motion to not accept.
Exactly.
So, that's a motion to our committee right now.
Correct.
So, could you read the motion again, Mr. Vecchia? I'm sorry.
The committee voted not to pursue the RFP at this time.
Right. So, that is a motion that doesn't need a second for this committee? Is there any discussion on the motion to not pursue the RFP from Healy Transportation? Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Okay. Now, we're down to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in follow-up to Mr. Vecchia, we did do an extensive look at transportation and we will continue to do that throughout the school year and have more discussions in the subcommittee around perhaps a more extensive search in, with the RFP, looking at more detail when we send out the RFP in terms of our total number of riders, what our athletic budget, our athletic transportation runs looks like, as well as our field trip runs and get some more clarity regarding the cost of fuel and how that impacted my look at our current costs for transportation. So, I look forward to providing that detail and seeing if we send out RFPs, if they do come back looking different and then adding in subcommittee to that conversation some discussions around the longevity of the vehicles that we have, what they look like, how, how they're faring, what the long-term plan is in terms of maintaining those vehicles and what the cost would be associated with not just the repair and upkeep of the vehicles, but some sort of a replacement plan and yearly costs. We have been fortunate not to have incurred too much cost on that. I believe that over the past few years, the cost of owning the vehicles and leasing vehicles has been upwards of about $9,000 a year. I believe we have one more payment on one of those vehicles. Like, like everything else, vehicles have a lifespan and so in order to accurately determine whether or not this is a good move for us to keep vehicles in-house or to outsource, we would have to have some sort of a plan and a projection for the cost of that. So, I look forward to working with the subcommittee to continue that work. In terms of my superintendent's report, I want to touch on a few things. I did, as part of my goals, review many items at the October meeting as an update. Each time I do my superintendent report, I'll be touching on some of those goals. However, I'll incorporate them in additional superintendent update directly related to the goals. So, for athletics, I am in the process of looking at the oversight from Miller Field Committee to put together to look at how the maintenance of that field is going to look, the scheduling of that field, what the maintenance director will be doing, how the town will be involved in that. So, that process has been ongoing and speeding up a little bit more now as the details become clearer to us with the folks from Gilbane who've been working on the field will be providing us with warranty information. Along with that, anything you buy usually comes with a warranty and maintenance suggestions. So, we'll be looking at the suggestions for the maintenance of not just the field itself, not just the turf, but also looking at the structure of the field house and what comes along with that, including the bathrooms, coaches rooms, sorry, not coaches rooms, referee rooms and the trainer's room, looking at the maintenance of the stands, how that will look. There is going to be some grass in the area, so how that is going to work out. So, again, another committee set up to, to take a peek at that. I have to give a shout-out to both Matt Crombie and Matt Serino, who have had to endure my pressure on looking at other communities that have put fields in place. Not to recreate the wheel is my plan and to reach out to find out what other communities have done in terms of problems that they've run into so that we can try to avoid those. And both Matt and Matt have gone out and done some extensive work and are bringing packets of information back to me with suggestions. And so, how that fares up to the new Miller Field will be interesting, but it's work that needs to be done faster than almost any other subcommittee that I'm on as that field, you know, is right around the corner. So, we'll continue to do that good work. In terms of facilities, I continue to meet monthly with Rich Zuffini and Mikhail. This particular past few weeks, we have been discussing the increase in the electric bills. As everybody knows, we had Frank Nitti come out and talk about the potential for solar panels. It was timely because we had electric bills at the middle and high school, which had a significant jump over the summer. You expect some jump with air conditioning, however, not the significant jump that we saw. We have had about four meetings looking at the overall potential electric increase, you know, where that may be coming from. And Mikhail has been monitoring the two systems that we have and what he has found, and I'm going to read only because I don't want to mess up the good information that he gave me, but as of right now, he has to remotely and has been remotely shutting off the air conditioning from an app that he has on both his computer and at home. He checks it two times after he leaves the office every day to ensure that they are shut off because for some reason and through his good work in looking at those systems, he has found that the control system is not communicating properly with, with the actual machinery. So, very technical, something that I'm not used to listening to or understanding, but what I do know is that Huntington Controls and Dykens are the two companies that need to come together to figure out why that is happening. So, we are looking at the length of time that that may have been occurring. However, it would not have been noticed if Mikhail did not go through multiple steps in looking at the computer system and try to determine why there were these sort of spikes in electricity. Along with that, the principals and Rich and Mikhail and the custodians are going through their punch list every day in each classroom and we are asking that the custodians are reporting to us if windows are still open or if lights are still on. And I know many of our lights are on a movement, a motion schedule. So, if the window is open a crack, the air coming through the window could be motioning the lights to go on. So, as it seems, that can increase your electricity bill quite a bit. So, we've asked for accountability in, with the custodians to check off if they are finding that there is a window open that may be causing this so that we may have the principal or the assistant principals work with the teachers to make sure they're following their own checklist at the end of the day. Sounds silly, but, you know, 10 lights going on and 10 windows being open, it can cause a significant increase. So, all of those good things are continuing to go on. We are also in the process of reviewing and updating all the contracts for service with keen eye on negotiating with the companies that we use. John English has done some nice work over at the Gorman Ford Banks in looking at negotiating prices for filters, replacement of filters and a three-year agreement sometimes gets you a better price than a two-year agreement. So, having the principals be able to work with their custodial staff on sort of that fine work of negotiating contracts has, has been something semi-new, but definitely worthwhile. The, we had a chair slide issue. I'm not sure if people know about that, but at the new middle and high school, the bottoms of the chairs have slides on them so that when the chairs, they're very heavy. I don't know if you've been in the classrooms, but the chairs themselves are very heavy. They go up on the desks every night so the staff can get in, clean the rooms. What we're finding is the floors are being scratched. So, and I know this is sort of nitpicky of, of facilities, but brand-new floors. So, brand-new floors should not be being scratched by brand-new chairs. So, what we found was we had Tina from FM, no, HMFA, I'll have to get the correct, her correct title, but she had come out and looked at those and, and really worked with the companies that provide us with warranties on the floor. And lo and behold, after several weeks of semi-finger pointing, we were able to get those slides replaced on all of our chairs to stop scratching the floors. The chair company and the slide company felt as though it was a problem with the floor. The people who were, put the floors in said there's no way those chairs could be scratching those floors. So, when we finally had a meeting of the minds, it was determined that the slides needed to be replaced. So, those are on schedule with Mr. Crombie and, and Brian to have people come in and replace them when students aren't in school. A nitpicky little thing, but, you know, two years from now, we'd be dealing with floor replacement, which we don't want to do. The boards that fell at the middle school, I'm sure everybody heard about that. We had some boards that dislodged from the roof. There was all kinds of technical construction people reasoning that that happened. The sort of layman's version of it is the nail gun orientation was off when those boards were put in. That has since been replaced. Many people have gone for training on how to hold a nail gun. I'm not sure if there is such a training. However, they have been replaced and we have checked, the company, Archer, has gone around and checked other areas to make sure we have no more ineffective angles of nail guns causing boards to come down, thankfully not hitting kids or staff. So, that has been taken care of. In terms of administration, we are in the process of some interesting work on drafting district core values. Every building has core values. I am a firm believer in the district core values, driving those building core values, so we are updating those. We're doing some more interesting work on developing a statement of inclusivity and that statement, I believe, as well as the administration believes that it's important for us to have an affirmation that all students and families are welcome in the Winthrop Public Schools regardless of age, race, color, sex, gender, ID, religion, national origin, sexual orientation or disability. And this is pretty much to let everybody know that we are preserving diversity and anti-discrimination protection for all of our students. We're working closely with some folks from other public schools and the good work that Melrose has done and really using a lot of work from the National Association of School Psychologists. Pretty bright people who have to face a lot of this work around the current state of this country and war, things like war, things like natural disasters, just overall school-related disasters and how to talk to students, how to fill out parents' in. So, ideally, in the end, we're going to have some nice links on our website, but also resources for parents and students in multiple languages to be able to access when there is something tragic that happens and, or something that needs to be explained to students in a way that they can understand. And nobody is an expert in all of those areas. So, the good work that has been done in some other communities is now becoming available for us to use as resources and we're sort of jumping on that. I hope to have a letter to the community and to our parents within the next month or two that I will share with the school committee for approval that will speak about this district, the Winthrop Public Schools' commitment to inclusivity. And I think that would be a very powerful and important statement. More importantly, will be our follow-through and what we do when there is something such as hateful language that appears somewhere on a piece of our school property, what is our reaction to that? And we, as a district, will have a very scripted reaction to that. And when I say scripted, scripted because we need to follow protocols and we need to be able to ensure that all of our students are safe. And our administrative team is, is super pumped up about doing this, so that's, it's making it fun, but it's also making it really stand out as something that's very meaningful and important to the school system as a whole. In terms of the budget.
Related to that, I think we should reach out to leaders in the community, whether it's, you know, religious leaders or leaders of organizations or town council members or people that have expertise in hate crimes or traumas or people that can come and speak to the community as a whole. I know that as a parent, it's difficult to explain something like Las Vegas or, you know, even what's going on with the hurricane. So, it's difficult to explain that to a sixth grader and, and what she hears at school may be not quite the same as what I tell her at home.
Right.
So, I do think it's important that we come together and have some community-wide sessions or conversations with maybe experts from outside of Winthrop to moderate or, or have, you know, some kind of, like you're saying, common language that we can respond to, to our families and our children.
And some, some of our administrators have asked to be part of putting together a crisis team or a reaction team and then they, one of the things they talked about was having a name for it that wasn't so scary. So, a team that comes together to talk about how are we going to address this issue, not just from the school's perspective, but within the community, within our churches, within our recreation programs, within our, you know, downtown center area. You know, we have multiple restaurants that, you know, serve us well and, and serve us all kinds of different cultures and experiences and I think you're going to see much more of that popping up in terms of opening places where people can come together as a community. There are lots of community spaces that people are now engaging in just for conversation and reflection and those places will be key in understanding, you know, what we represent as a school and a community. So, exciting work. That needs to be taken seriously and slowly so that when we do roll it out, it's rolled out with fidelity and folks are interested in it and want to be part of it. So, more on that. Couple more items, the budget. The end of the year report is nearly complete and I know it's well beyond the end of the year in a lot of people's minds, but this is the proper timeline for looking at the end of the year report. I've worked with Michael Perez and Susan, you know, thankfully has her hand on, on the pulse of a lot of this and can get the documentation ready for us so that we can report out our numbers accurately so the Department of Education's website reflects who we are as a district accurately. And so, that's, that's been some nice work to see that coming just from our district without an outside person having to come in and thankfully Susan has been a big piece of that. We've had a couple of unexpected things happen in the budget in terms of move-ins with collaborative tuitions and working closely with the PPS director on keeping that in, under wraps. And we are in the process of appealing a Department of Education's LEA decision. We had asked for an LEA assignment on a tuition that we have that I strongly and firmly believe does not belong to us. It came back with Winthrop being the LEA or the local educational agency responsible for that tuition. I continue to disagree, so that is in the appeal process and hopefully will rule in our favor based on, sometimes these, these decisions get made on a Friday afternoon where somebody is going to finish it up and get it out. And if you don't appeal it and you think you, you know, you really do think you have a case, if you don't appeal it, you own it. So, we're in the, the process of appealing. So, just to bring you up to date on that. Now, for some good news, middle school, 148th graders participated in cleanup day at Ingleside Park the other day and not only did I see them walk by, I heard them go by. It was like a herd of cattle going by and they were all laughing and having fun as they walked safely back to the middle school. Sometimes it's tough to sit in this building because you don't oftentimes get to see students. That's why I'm in buildings a lot. But to hear that herd of cattle coming down the street, kids laughing and fooling around and enjoying themselves.
They did a good job.
They did a great job. And I texted Brian saying, "The kids are too loud" and he thought I was serious, but I wasn't. And they were happy. They were excited. They were physically moving and engaged in, in their community, which is so important and I hope that we see so much more of it. I love when people see our kids doing good things. I would appreciate a few calls when you see them doing the good things as opposed to just when they may be engaging in some silliness. So, it was nice to, to see that they did that. Lots of accolades on, on how nice the field looked as well. Clubs and activities have been posted to the middle school webpage in terms of the times. I had the opportunity to meet with, with the PTCs and PTOs, which are clearly not PTA's and I'm going to learn that lesson quickly. So, met with them and talking about some of the things they need and that was some clarity that they wanted. High schools working on the same, just for informational purposes. Good news at the ATC, Gillian Dempsey who's appointed as the captain of the Boston Pride's Women's Professional Hockey Team. And, and this is very impressive accomplishment, but, you know, watching Gillian as I have been able to, both on the ice and more recently in the classroom, it just speaks to what Winthrop produces from a student to a teacher. Imagine having the teachers a pro hockey player. Who can say that? How many people can say that? And she is, so I congratulate her. More importantly, she's, she's a really good person in, in the way she motivates students, not just through athletics, but just motivation as, as an athlete. And it just comes so naturally to her. So, it was nice to hear that. They launched their own student-driven parent conferences last week. They have approximately 400 parents signed up. Teachers and parents now have the option of allowing students to attend and share their personal growth goals. Each child developed three goals for the year in math, ELA and overall community, right back to community piece, which I've sort of been driving and seems to be working. Gorman Ford Banks had their book sale. I happened to go over there for my building meeting that week and there were all kinds of cute little kids walking around, so proud to have their books and to be able to pick those themselves. And I have some information that you can pick up on your way out if you want. I had the opportunity to attend a grade-level data meeting where a bunch of teachers were sitting around a table talking about kindergarten kids and their ability to read. Very, very interesting to watch teaching staff in action, talking about the data they collected on students, how they collected it through DIBELS and how powerful that data is. More importantly and impressive was what they did with it, which is huge. You can have tons of data and do nothing with it. That'll look nice, it'll be a big, huge stack of stuff. But what they do with that data and how they took the time and, and their schedule has been orchestrated to take the time to sit together as a group, look at that data and use it to not only group students, but to take a look at how some students can motivate other students, what type of conversations, meaningful conversations about what approach they're using, whether they're using Telian reading or Wilson reading or more- or more of a whole language approach. Identifying how certain reading approaches or working with certain groups of students has been really interesting to watch, and then how excited they get about it. I'm not, I don't usually get excited over data in terms of itself, but how it can be used to drive instruction is when it becomes a pretty neat thing to watch. So I'll leave you not with a copy of the data of the students, but with the grade-level data meeting format that they use and how they plan these meetings. These meetings happen often across the whole district. And my job is to now look at how they're working in each building and to be able to bring to the principals a little bit of what everybody else does. And Gorman Ford Banks, let me see, what else did I have? I think that was it for that part of my report. And that's longer than I usually like to go. So I thank you for listening. It's important to kind of catch you up on what I've been saying.
Yeah, that's great. Would you like to just go straight into personnel?
Sure. Personnel appointments, as of this minute, we do not have any. We have no resignations or retirements. The postings that you see for a few things, transportation coordinator, a job coach, as well as all of the building stipended positions. So they are late coming out this year, and I know some folks are a wee bit frustrated with that. They're late coming out because it needs to go through each one and equate a job description. You'll see a job description with the transportation coordinator. Going through the budget, not knowing what it is that people do and seeing a figure attached to that, whether it's $2 or $10,000, doesn't really matter. Part of my annoying behavior is going through and asking people, "What is it that you do, and how do we know that you've done it?" And so that's been very interesting. And I have asked for job descriptions to be tied in expectations for what happens at the smaller venue with the stipends that teachers get, and then ask the principals to, as the teachers sign contracts for each one of those. Again, some of them are not a lot of money for a lot of work, but at least putting a job description and expectation of what the outcome should be so that at the end, when we are paying people for doing something, we know what they've done, when they've done it, how well it worked, and do we need it next year? So when we're starting to design that budget, we haven't run a certain club in five years. Probably shouldn't still have it down there as a stipend. It may be a more important club. And so principals have been very creative in looking at the clubs that they have that haven't been running and justifying perhaps a new club. I worked closely with the union because a new club may not be reflected in the contract. We have an understanding that we'll keep track of what newness is and what new clubs are and look at having them put in next year's contract and then eliminating those clubs that didn't work in the past. So that has been a lot of work, but job descriptions are coming out everywhere. And actually, people are thankful for them because it does allow them to follow sort of the rules. And leaves of absence, we have none.
Great. Thank you. So under new business, I had the deliberation of electronic communications policy put in our packets just to reinforce this fourth one down here about the use of email. So the email, if we're emailing a quorum, so if we're emailing each other with more members than a quorum, we have to, oh, no, it's this first one here, sorry. I'm just going to read it. "Yes, may a public body member communicate with other public body members over email? Yes, but only in limited circumstances. A member of a public body may email other public body members on matters with jurisdiction on a public body so long as the email does not reach a quorum." And if it does reach a quorum, the only content of the email that can be discussed is scheduling, really. Scheduling a meeting, distributing an agenda, or distributing reports to be discussed at a meeting. But no discussion should happen over email if the email is going to a quorum, which on this committee is four or more people. Are there any questions about that?
Think it also counts if I tell you something and you're the next person. It doesn't have to be a widespread email, it just has to be the same subject. We're all kind of talking in different emails.
Yeah, so just a reminder, if we're ever hitting reply to all, that's a quorum if it's committee. So any communication over email should really be stuck to, sticking to agenda and scheduling. Agenda items and scheduling, not discussion over the items. All right. We have a bunch of policies that Dr. Callis and I took the time to revise, and tonight would be the first reading.
Can I make a motion that we waive the first readings of these policies?
Of these policies?
A second.
I'd like a second, thank you, Mr. Beck. Any discussion on that motion to waive the first readings? I think we did at our last meeting go over the main points of any revisions that happened. So we'll look forward to the second reading at our next meeting and adopting these policies for good. Under unfinished business, we have transportation RFP, which we did finish tonight. And we are back down to public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comments, public donations, Dr. Callis?
None, thank you.
Mr. Beck?
Just a reminder of Speaker of the House Bob Delio's Women's Health Forum Thursday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. at the Winthrop High School. It's a well-attended event every year.
That's a great event. And who's the guest speaker this year?
Jan, how do you pronounce that? Jadian Thompson.
Jadian Thompson, Channel 7 News anchor.
Ah, there she goes.
Jadian. Nice.
Several others. Valerie Giglio, attorney and stroke survivor. Alice Haskell, she's chair of the Winthrop Council and agent.
And I think you can get your flu shot and lots of other kind of goodies.
Yep.
They have lots of vendors there, too, so. The Winthrop Middle School is having a bake sale at, I think, French Square from 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturday morning. If you'd like to donate any baked goods, you can just contact the PTO. Mr. Perrin?
I don't know if it's the right section for this, but I just want to see if we can possibly reinstitute the student government, students coming in. I just think it was a valuable piece to have them coming in and speaking about what's going on in the high school, the middle school, or most of the high school.
Yes, we did.
We talked about that.
We have talked about that with them and Mr. Crombie.
Schedules are tough with sports.
Yeah, schedules were tough with sports, and they talked about perhaps starting it up in November.
Yeah, maybe rotating them through or something, just so that we have someone here to...
It looked like we were going to be having the senior president and the junior president, class president, come in and do a few minutes, but then be able to be excused so that they could get to homework and games and whatnot. So they have, that discussion has been had. The kids were excited about it, so we looked at the beginning of November to sort of kick that off.
Thanks, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, thank you. President Sanford? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questioned by President Sanford. All in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.